All right, call to order of the Fayette County Board of Education Work Session on April 8th, Need a motion for, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir, we're, would submit the agenda as approved.
Okay, I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Five oh. And I'll turn it over for the presentations.
Okay, we've been looking at our math textbook adoption, and I know Ms. Stroutman's here, and our math coordinator, and Ms. LaMonaco, she's going to actually do some presentation with regard to our Exceptional Children's portion of it, and Dr. Turner will fill in some blanks with us, but we do have a presentation for us, and Ms. Stroutman, if you will, please proceed.
Okay, Dr. Bear introduced me, I'm the math coordinator, and I'm here to make my recommendations for the elementary, middle, and high school math textbook adoptions. I, I know you read through my slides, so I don't want to go slide by slide, but I was just going to do a brief overview of the process we went through. On the first PL day during pre-planning, I presented all the educational resources to the elementary, middle, and high, so every teacher in the county got to put their eyes on the resources that were presented, and they took the afternoon and decided on their top four choices that they would like presented to the textbook committee. I had, then I proceeded to the next day of activities, which I kept the elementary separated from the middle and high school. I had four publishers come in, and they presented with all the different technologies and types of textbooks. The teachers wanted to have a presentation to be able to narrow it down to the top two. So we had presentations from four publishers at the elementary level, and then again on another day at the middle and high school levels. Then the textbook committee went back, they took the rubrics, and they looked at the alignment with the textbooks, and the textbook committee decided on the top two selections. After the top two selections were decided, I put the textbooks out into the schools for all teachers to do, to use the rubric, which I had provided you, and every teacher had the 30 days to put their eyes on the textbook, sit with their grade levels, and align it with the standards, or to see how well it aligned with the standards, and any questions they had for myself. After they filled out their rubrics, I collected rubrics from every grade level in every school, and I went and scored the rubrics, and my recommendations have been made. At the elementary, we decided at this time, we were looking at online resources, which are free resources, and because they also have unit plans on the Blackboard site that they use heavily, and they sparingly use the workbooks, we decided to go with the units that we have planned, and use the free online resources like Engage New York and Bridges. And we also, I put a committee together, and we decided that we were going to follow the state frameworks, which are very detailed for each unit. So we have a committee that is going to tweak, per se, the units for the elementary teachers, and lay, lay out some more resources for them to use, since we decided not to use a textbook. The middle school, you can see that we asked for McGraw-Glenco, with an addition of maybe the Alex program, which is a web-based program. That was introduced along with the public, when the publisher came, and the teachers asked for more information about Alex. I had a webinar that all middle schools sat and watched after school. I sat with, I sat at Bennett's Mill Middle School. We watched the webinar, and I got feedback from all the middle schools. They were very interested in this program. This is a computer program that, it's costly, but it serves many purposes. It would be our progress monitoring piece, which would take the place of STAR. It would be used for remediation, acceleration, and we can also write our common assessments from that. That is a direction I'm headed with the middle school. After the advice from Advanced Ed and from our strategic plan, I want to put in place next year common assessments for the middle school to use, so we would also use the aid of Alex to help us write those common assessments this summer, if that would be a possibility. We would save money, because I wouldn't be purchasing DreamBox, StarMath, or Moby Max if I, if we were to purchase Alex. That would save us around $58,000, which I know that's not a whole lot comparable to the price of Alex, but I feel that the teachers, after seeing this, and reaching out to each middle school separately, their feedback from the webinar was exactly the same. When they first started watching the webinar, they thought it would be a good program for EIP, and maybe resource students, but after watching all the areas that we could use before, they felt like it would be a great tool for everybody, every student in the middle school to be able to use. And then in the high school, I think you saw all our adoption pieces for Algebra I through Algebra II, and then for Precalculus, and Accelerated Precalculus, and AP Calculus, and then Statistical Reasonings and AP Statistics. Oh, does anybody have any questions for me? I'm making that up. I can probably talk loud enough.
Yeah, at the high school level, you're also going to do the McGraw-Hill and the Alex?
No, that's just for the middle school. The high school goes, the high school Algebra I through Algebra II is using Big Ideas. The McGraw-Hill-Glenco is just for the middle school, six through eight.
Okay. Deb, I'm, I'm not really familiar with Alex, so I'm showing, showing my ignorance here. Have, are there other districts in Georgia that are using the Alex program?
Yes, there are other districts. Actually, I had two teachers at Bennett's Mill that came from other districts that used it, and they kind of, after Marlin, he was the rep, came and presented it, I was, you know, I was interested in it, but I know with a cost like that, I needed more information. So I reached out to those two teachers, and they gave me the feedback of how they used it, and they, those two really, really pushed for it, and that's what made me want to reach out to have the webinar, because I needed to be more informed, and I wanted all the input from the middle school, because they also, it was, it was presented to us, but you know, the bells and whistles were all presented in a short time, so.
And just for clarification from me, I know you said you, we wouldn't be purchasing some of the other programs, DreamBox is one that I'm, I'm familiar with.
Right.
Would we continue to use DreamBox at the elementary level?
Yes, sir, yes.
And that's, that's kind of what I thought, but I wanted to be sure.
After looking at the usage for DreamBox, and I've heard it from a lot of the middle school teachers, by the time, DreamBox is an awesome computer program for elementary, and it is for middle school, but by the time they get to the middle school, I've heard, not complaints, but I've heard concerns from, once I got more comfortable in this position, about the students are a little burned out by middle school, so they, they're not as apt to want to get on DreamBox. So I felt like it was safe, and I did when I, we looked, watched the webinar, and the teachers, the feedback I got, and everybody really liked the Alex, I said, we cannot have all these computer programs, because even if we use one computer program with fidelity, it's going to work. But I said, if we're all reaching out in all these different areas, purchasing these, no one program is going to work the best for us. So I did say that I would look at dropping DreamBox, because it's not heavily used in the middle school.
Right.
I was informed that they were going to make a different platform for DreamBox for the middle school, but it's delayed for a year now.
Okay.
So I feel comfortable about not purchasing the DreamBox for middle school.
Well, I can say this, as a parent of sixth graders, that spot on with what you've just said, you know, they loved it when they were in elementary school, they're a little tired, and they've gone on to other things like Prodigy and a few other things. So you're, you're telling me exactly what I'm hearing from my own kids.
That's good.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm still a bit confused about the high school, so we're going to use the Big Ideas computer programs at the high school?
No, the Big Ideas is Singage, it's a textbook company, yes. I have all textbook companies at the high school also. It's just, we vary at the high school, because when you get to the AP, when you get to statistical reasoning and AP Statistics, they're using the same company that they used before, it's just an update, and the Accelerated Calculus and AP Calculus is the same company also, they just wanted an update for those areas. And College Board has changed some, I, I can't explain exactly what the changes are, but there's changes coming, and they need the new books with the changes in them.
Yeah, I got a question. Yeah, I got a question. This is kind of a long-term, kind of Big Idea question, not the package, but just kind of a long-term question. From time to time, I come across studies that conclude that students are doing poor in math, and they are not as proficient, and the, the, the math proficiency is declining since the onset of Common Core, and I know that you've got parameters you've got to live within, and I appreciate that, but I guess my question is, would it be worth it, would it be beneficial to our students for the board to pursue maybe legal remedies that would let us adapt Fayette County standards that would be better for our students, rather than have to be subject to what somebody in Washington, Atlanta tells us? And that might not, that might not ever be possible, but I just wanted to get your input on that, and if that, if that would even be, have any worth pursuing, or would that be beneficial to our students?
When we say Common Core standards, our standards are adapted to the Common Core, so we're not strictly sticking to the Common Core standards. And I will say, I'm from different areas, I've worked in four other states, and looking at the proficiency of the standards working for us here in Fayette County, we have very high standards, and we go very in-depth, and our rigor with the math is a lot higher than in areas that I've worked before. So I'm not for, for certain that we need to change the standards. We do have some Fayette County standards that we have plugged into our curriculum, but from, I'm fairly new at this, but from living in other areas and looking at the proficiency here, our standards and our rigor with the standards that we have right now are very high. I, I do feel like we do have areas that we need to work on, maybe helping with teacher preparation. I know in the elementary school, I had a big meeting this morning with how we're going to help the elementary teachers, because they're focused on all the subjects in the elementary school, but we want to make them more comfortable with the math standards, and what we need to do is really break down those standards with the teachers, because I don't, I wouldn't say it's the standards, I think it's our interpretation of the standards.
And I'm not looking for a new project to do.
I'm not looking for one either.
But that's something, I think, would be at the board level, to talk about pursuing, changing of standards.
I would be interested in seeing what kind of standards that you would like are revised.
I, I guess that's my question to you, is if you feel like our standards are developmentally appropriate and are sufficiently rigorous, then maybe these studies I read from time to time are talking about districts in some other part of the country.
And I, I think that's fair to say, and I feel like I can stand here and say that, because when I come here, I'm wowed. I was just asked the other week, how do we compare with where you worked before, and I, this, of course, you know, Fayette County is awesome, but from where I worked before, our, our rigor in the math standards, and our students do very well with the standards, I just, I think the teachers don't just go with the standards, we drive them to dig deeper and put that rigor into place. And I think at other places, it's, okay, let's accomplish the standard, and maybe not always in-depth or with the rigor.
A couple of things, Dr. Marchman, if I can.
Sure.
The, if, if board members recall, as I was coming in, in, in the Fayette County, we were actually having the conversation about math adoptions, and there were a couple of things that, that came up as questions. One was, are we still going to have a book, or are we going to begin to transition to some digital resources? Well, we, we sort of dipped our toe into that, and as you can hear, particularly with the elementary school, we're looking at more of those, so I, I think we're making progress there. The, with the Georgia Standards of Excellence, or GSE, the, you know, the point that we want to make, and we certainly want our parents and consumers to know, is that the textbook is not the standard. We've got those standards that are, that are there, and one of the things, as, as the debate raged on about the Common Core piece.
Let me interject something, I didn't mean to imply that.
No, 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 I, but this is, this is really probably.
But that was one of your criteria, was to match the standards, so that's why I was asking about the standards.
Yeah, and, and the part of, because I'm assuming that other people will be listening to this podcast too, so I want to make sure they understand that the, the standards that were developed here, that we had here in Fayette, are really above and beyond what I consider to be Common Core standards. That was something that was done, we insisted upon, I know our board at that time said, we, we want that, we don't want to just fall in line behind the rest of the, the states that were adopting that, so I think that's part of the reason why you see the results that we have in math, so that's a, that's a good thing, and I think this proposal, for the most part, is hoping to try to fit that bill even better, but we want them, we want those rigorous standards. I couldn't agree with you more, and if there's some things that we want to do as a board to push that and pursue that, I think our folks are willing to, to jump in.
And I think I need to reiterate when I say aligned to the standards, if we are going to get a textbook, we don't want a textbook that's not aligned to our standards that will sit on the shelf. And I had, I repeatedly went back to the elementary teachers, saying, I want this only to be used as a resource. What you're doing in the classroom, you're doing a great job there, I'm not asking you to get a book to go page by page, but when I say aligned to the standards, we want to make sure they are somewhat aligned to our standards, so if we do adopt the book, it will be used and not just put on a bookshelf.
Well, and also the assessments that we are taking, I mean, that's, that's, we've got to make sure we cover those in order for our students to do well on the milestones.
I think at the.
Thanks. At the elementary level, so I have one left at elementary, one of the things that I think perplexes parents, myself included, is, is the, I guess, the need over the last decade or so to change the names of a lot of things, for instance, regrouping as an example, right? I was like, regrouping, I'm like, I'm going to think about this for a second, and a lot of times, when there's not a book, and this is just devil's advocate, I'm fine with the proposal, when there's not a book, parents are trying to figure out how to help their kids, you know, even third, fourth, and fifth grade, and, oh, you're doing it wrong, that's wrong, oh, no, no, we do it this way, with the drawly circles, whatever, right? And that, that creates, that right there creates the online discussions, they get people all fired up, and then they find articles about Common Core, and they're, you know, they're, they're in a tizzy, but when I see my, my fourth graders' assignments, shouldn't have a book, there's no book that comes home, there's a worksheet, and without having adequate examples that the parent can model when they try to help the kid, it's hard to help the child in using the right context of today, of, you know, the new buzzwords.
Right.
And, and I think as we move forward, you know, with this, that would be one area to, to look at, because I, I hear that a lot, a lot of complaints sitting around, do you know how to do this? And I'm like, yeah, you know, but it's, people get confused on that, and I think a lot of it is just nomenclature, really, less than, it's not always how you do it, it's, it's how it's, how it's labeled nowadays, you know, the labels have changed.
Well, and I referenced going with the state frameworks, we decided that we are going to match the state frameworks, and on the state frameworks, on the pages, it is an excellent resource for the parents that I don't think a lot of parents are aware of, and there's, you know, I reviewed the parent letters over the weekend, and they have a parent letter for each unit, and what I especially liked about it were the examples that they gave for each of the standards, and what it should look like from your child's point of view.
See, I would suggest that the math teacher in question, you know, the fourth or fifth grade, speaking of elementary right now.
Right.
Don't expect that the parents are going to go hunt down on some state website and find this section and map it, maybe there's a way to include a link in email, just something to make it easy to take that objection off the table.
But we also have that, we've talked, we've gone through a lot just this morning, in probably the two hours that we talked, but we are going to add that to the Blackboard, and I appreciate that suggestion, but we want, and our Blackboard sites already have an area for each of the elementary, for parents to go to if your child needs extra help, so it is out there, we just have to communicate that more clearly, maybe, to the parents.
And that's one thing, we didn't have Blackboard the last time we adopted, so I would like to think that that's something that we can continue with whatever LMS we, we use, that we continue to provide that support, and I, I think that's a great point, Mr. Anderson, and thanks for bringing that up. We want to make sure our parents have that support, so they can help their kids at home.
Sure.
And I, and I think that was a question with, you know, I'm trying to think of the questions you may ask me before I got up here, and Dr. Turner said, well, they might ask you about the middle and high needing textbooks, and they do need that to reference, because once, and I know we name it different names now with the elementary school, but once you get to the middle and high, I hear a lot of parents saying, well, I can't even help my child, but the child needs that resource to go back and refer to, and the parent needs that. But I think getting away from the textbooks in the elementary, we have to make sure that we do a better job with communicating with the parents, and I'm glad you brought that up, because that was a high point that we talked about this morning.
Yeah, I just, recently, a few weeks ago, I was told I'm doing it wrong, and that's not what you call it, so you know how that goes.
Yeah, well, we'll put the vocabulary in there for you.
Yeah, I just have a final thought. If, if there's something in the standard, or I guess you picked the curriculum, but if there's something at the federal or state level that is an obstacle for you or for our kids doing their best, I just want to let you know that the board's willing to go to bat for you.
Okay.
And, you know, change the policies that need to be changed, and lobby for the laws or standards that need to be changed, and, but we're depending on you to tell us how the kids are doing and what the obstacles are.
I appreciate that.
You're good?
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. LaMonaco's going to come up and share a little bit about our Exceptional Children service now, or students, and we are going to use some materials at the elementary level for the.
Well, I kind of mirrored what Deb did for the GenEd side, so this is just the special education side, and we're really looking for materials to, that are in addition to what we're adopting for, my standing too, that are in addition to what we're adopting for our general education students. So we can go through the PowerPoint, but I'm, I'm kind of assuming, like she did, that you guys have kind of looked through some things, but our primary vision, I guess you would say, when we're, we're looking at this adoption, is to make sure that we have materials that can remediate the deficit areas that our special education students are faced with, the ones that have math deficits. We want to supplement any skills gaps that they might have, and, and be able to have materials that will scaffold any of the learning concepts, when they're learning these new concepts, to kind of build them up, to get them to the level they need to be at. Typically, we need to have materials that are multisensory and hands-on, that has been proven through research, to really help students with special education needs to learn and master the curriculum. And then we, we are looking for materials that are aligned to our Georgia Standards of Excellence as well, and that goes for both our general curriculum students, as well as our adaptive curriculum students. So with our adaptive curriculum students, those students, we want to provide access to the state standards, the Georgia Standards for Excellence, so it's still relevant there as well. And so what we did is we put together a committee, similar to what Deb did on her side, but we used, had a variety of participants from all across K-12, special education, the adaptive curriculum side, and the general curriculum side, to kind of go through, review everything that, the materials that we currently have, and determine what types of materials we needed to get in addition to what we already have. So we also provided a survey to all of our special educators across the county at all levels, and got all of their input, and the committee considered that information when determining what types of resources they needed to consider. And then we started off in the fall conducting that survey, and then we pulled together our committee group in October, to kind of get, get everybody up to speed on what we already had, and then all the possibilities for adoption, and we did have one of the textbook companies come and present to our committee, and that was Voyager Sopris. We decided that we didn't need to adopt just one particular K-12 curriculum, you know, because we already have, that's our primary curriculum, is what's being done on the GenEd side, so this is more what we need for our resource classes, any type of small group instruction, our adaptive curriculum, and self-contained classrooms, those, those students. They came back together again in January, and then that's when they made the final selections, and then we went forward with the proposal with the final selections, I think you guys should have a copy of that. So one of the programs that we want to adopt is Vmath, and that's for kindergarten through eighth grade students. There is a computerized piece to that, but there's actual textbook materials and workbooks and that type of thing as well. We also want to adopt TouchMath, and that's, that's really the key piece with the multisensory hands-on, for students that require that type of an approach. And the other thing that we're planning to adopt would be hands-on standards, so that it makes the standards hands-on, so even for things that you might not necessarily consider, you know, there's a possibility of making hands-on, this type of program does that for, for our students. And then for our adaptive curriculum students, the attainment company, they, they specifically make math materials for that population of students, that are more hands-on, and very relevant to like everyday kinds of mathematics. And that, that basically kind of covers it, I know I went through that kind of quickly. Do you guys have any specific questions for me? Yeah? Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is our Resource and Support for Digital Literacy, that's our Model of Achievement Accountability Goal Four, Objective One, and Mr. Farmer's going to come and share a little bit with you.
Okay, so on this one, okay, we'll go ahead and go to the slide two, and the next one, there we go. So for this goal area, we're, the performance objective one is to allocate adequate financial material resources commensurate with digital priorities, and so let's go ahead and go to the next slide. So through the major funding sources of E-Rate, which provides our bandwidth and internet access, obviously Sploßed for the, the devices and hardware and infrastructure, and then Technology Services, working real closely with, with curriculum and instruction, and digital learning, are the major areas where we provide the support and funding for, for this, for this performance objective. Go to the next one. So I know we've, last year, you know, was the big Connected Classroom Initiative, and got through many, many of the schools Chromebook rollouts, along with intensive professional learning from digital learning and from curriculum, so these are some of the, just the highlights of a lot of what was done, and is in, you know, is in continuation this year, with many of our schools now finalizing that one-to-one rollout piece, and finishing up the installation of the panels in all of the classrooms. So for, for these, the key highlights I wanted to point out were the professional learning support for teachers, which is the digital learning team, and they, there's five digital learning specialists that have feeder pattern each, and that work closely with those schools in providing technology integration supports. The teacher laptop aspect of the plan was, was, was a big step, because now all of our teachers have that mobile device that they use in class and can take with them outside of the building, and one of the things that's worked really well with the laptops is, the teachers have the ability to cast it to their screens, to their panels, and that's, that's been a real great instructional tool for the, for the teachers as well. And of course, we know about the Chromebooks for students, we are now one to we know about the Chromebooks for students. We are now, uh, one-to-one take home, um, for just over seventeen thousand Chromebooks in the district. And then just over approximately fifteen hundred interactive panels in all the classrooms. And then, um, digital content, resources, and platforms are obviously a, a big part of supporting that, you know, instructional model with a lot of the digital tools as we were just speaking about with some of the math, meeting some of that criteria as well. Go to the next one. And so on the, um, other side of this, I just wanted to mention that we've also done some big things, you know, with our, uh, technical support and, uh, network upgrades and security, uh, features that we've implemented over the past year. Um, and a big piece of that is the, the twenty-four seven, three hundred sixty-five monitoring pieces for, especially for security. Um, and it now is of course a big time of the year with testing coming up. That's a, on everybody's radar in my department as well. So these are kind of the, the, the big touch points and highlights that I wanted to point out about Performance Objective One. Um, and the, the last thing I wanted to mention just real quickly before I open up for any questions, um, if we go to the last slide, I think is, yeah, just the, the, the Performance Objective again, um, is, you know, in looking at our strategic plan, um, we are, we've gone, we're, been going through for the last few months a really, um, I think powerful process of updating the plan and working together as a team at the cabinet level. And that's been, um, a real good collaborative effort. And I think so with the, um, looking ahead, now that we've got our Connected Classroom in place and the Chromebooks in, in students' hands, um, we're real excited about, you know, what the future is bringing in Performance Objective One for us because we have such a good foundation that we've built with the strong plan that we have currently in place. So that's, it's, um, something we're real excited about. And I just wanted to, um, share those, uh, highlights with you guys and just open up if you had any questions.
Um, I'm just kind of curious in terms of, um, how are we doing on sort of missing and broken Chromebooks?
So we, um, had a really good meeting a couple of months ago with our Lexicon, which is our, uh, service provider for our warranty and white glove service. And, um, they provided some really good data and details about, about our, um, the missing and the broken and the warranty issues that we have. And, and they basically, uh, informed us that they use us as an example when they go speak to other districts because of how we've made some really good choices. Number one, with the Chromebook that we chose. So we have very few issues with the device itself because it's a sturdier, um, more well-made device. And the fact that we have the cases that are provided with the Chromebook.
Yeah, the cases are.
And they, they said that our, they, they showed us some, you know, charts and I, I'm, I'll share this information with you guys, uh, um, the, the presentations that they shared with us that basically show that our numbers compared to other districts, especially in the area that don't use the same Chromebook and don't have the cases we do, our numbers for repair and warranty issues are extremely low compared to other districts in the, in the, in that same one-to-one.
So you'd say the students are doing a pretty good job?
I, I think they're doing a fantastic job.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think another, uh, key that we learned in, um, from other districts as we were researching and looking into how to go about doing our one-to-one initiative, um, I think we made a really good choice in providing the student the device and saying, this is yours for the next hopefully four years. It's our refresh plan. That, that kind of had a, a sense of buy-in and ownership by the students. And so it's not something they're just being assigned and then turning back in at the end of the year. I think that played a big part in it as well. And so there's a really good, there's a, a sense of, uh, buy-in and ownership.
I, I know there are a lot of, um, some of our more creative students have figured out workarounds and hacking. And has, has Lexicon been able to provide some kind of security ideas?
We, Lexicon's more of our warranty, so they, they handle the setup and repair.
So not the software.
We have, we have another provider that provides our security pieces. And we are, uh, we were talking about this earlier. It's, it's a constant game of leapfrog in the security field where we put things in place and it's not really a wall, it's more of a hurdle. And people like to jump hurdles, which is understandable. But we're constantly having to put new hurdles up and, and keep things, um, from getting out of hand. But I, I think we have some really good systems in place. Uh, and that's a constant battle that you fight in that field for sure.
I just wanted to make sure you were getting help with it.
Oh, we, we are. And the companies that we use, both internally on the network are fantastic. And the ones that are on the Chromebooks themselves that go off-network are constantly upgrading and updating their, their security and absolutely.
Brian?
Jim, hey, in terms of the, like the LMS and some of the other systems, have, have you seen that, that it's now adopted widespread from a teacher standpoint across the district? Or is there still a lot of people doing their own one-off sites?
I, I think we have, you know, our K5s are heavy Google Classroom users, not as much on Blackboard as, as we had, you know, hoped by this point. But I, I think there's, there's a few reasons for that that we're constantly working on. But I, I think an LMS is a foundational piece of our instructional platform that we don't, absolutely don't want to move away from. Um, we have had some technical hurdles with Blackboard this year that, you know, no doubt have caused some of those, maybe lack of adoption that we would have liked to see by now.
Is it an ease of use of that platform? Maybe vis-à-vis there's another one that's better? Like, I don't know a lot about LMS.
Well, you know, th- this field is ever-changing. It's, it's extremely dynamic. So there are ob- obviously lots of other platforms out there. And, and we're constantly doing our due diligence to look at, you know, the options that we have and, and speaking with other systems and what they're using. Um, but I think one of the issues that, that was a big hurdle for us this year were we, we had a couple of major technical issues with the Blackboard platform. Um, and, and those were some pretty big stumbling blocks for us. And we've gotten through those. So now we think we're in better shape. And now it's a matter of, you know, working on the professional learning and getting the communication out with our, with our users.
Cool, thanks.
Some of, some of that, and I, this could be a whole presentation by itself, but, um, some of the LMS vendors, they partner with other companies to do some of their integration work. And that's where some of the stumbling blocks came from is we've got two and three fingers in the pie. And, uh, we've had to work through that with them. And, and I feel like, um, you know, there, as, as Jim said, there are multiple, um, LMS providers out there. And we've looked at a lot of them. We've continued to look because we want to use the one that's going to provide the best service for us. We just haven't found something that would compel us to make a big shift like that moving away from it.
What do we spend on Blackboard ballpark?
Um, I, I don't have the exact number, but it's, it's...
Seven figures plus?
It, no, it's not.
No, okay. Last time I checked, I, I, I want to say two sixty-eight. Don't quote me on that.
And, and I think that includes the website.
Right.
And the LMS. So that's multiple platforms.
That's everything.
Yeah, I, that's...
I signed those contracts, so I kind of look at those.
Yeah, I was just thinking, because I, I've just heard a lot of...
It's been, it's been a few months since I've seen that exact number, but that's, that sounds about right. Yeah, it's a substantial number, that's for sure. Uh, it's, and you know, um, I, you know, because of those stumbling blocks we had this year, it was very troublesome because a, as I've always said, the, you know, these are tools that we're providing for our students and our teachers. And we, we want them to be able to enhance what they're doing and engage their students and have our ga, our students engaged. And when that doesn't happen, it's, it's very troubling.
Well, going back to the math textbook discussion, you know, when you get a message about, I'm just curious how many parents at the elementary school, if we do, we could probably do an audit by, by elementary school level child for access. How many of them are really accessing the resources that are on these external sites? So like, we say, hey, here's your worksheet. There's no book anymore, but go click here and, oh shoot, you got to know your login to Blackboard and then this other site. I, I, I have a strong feeling the number is less than we think.
I, I, this is a perfect segue for me to explain. So the, the, the last thing I did want to mention, and, and I swear I didn't plan this, but this is a perfect segue.
You're welcome.
Exactly what I wanted to, to mention to you guys. Um, so, uh, you know, a big part of, of what we do is we're providing resources, platforms, and tools. Um, well, right now, we, we use a system called Clever for some of our students to get to some of their tools. But not all of our users use that consistently and it's not across the board. So we're looking at a, a solution that, that is going to provide a, a portal or launchpad, whatever you want to call it, um, that whenever a student or a teacher in Fayette County opens up a browser, it's going to be on our launch page. And it's going to have Blackboard, uh, I think Circa, Dreambox, whatever it is that those students have access to or that we've provided as a district, they will all be there and they'll be one click away. Now, the beauty of this is it's going to provide consistency, it's going to provide one-click access. And for those students who may be special needs or younger kids, they still can use the, the badge, or even in some cases, it does facial recognition. So, um, the great thing about that is, to your point exactly, now we'll be able to tell from reports what's being used and, and have a much better idea of where our money is going. Is it, is it worthwhile?
It's going to provide a lot of analytics for us.
But right now, we probably have audit level at, at a Blackboard level, right?
We do, but it's, we do, but it's by platform. And some of it may be here, some of it may be here. And it's, so it's scattered.
Okay.
And it's not really, uh, real rich data. It's, in, in some cases, um, it's just click-through. So it's not giving us really good information. So we're looking at a, a couple of solutions that are going to give, provide much better analytics and information from a, you know, return on learning investment perspective. So we're, we're, we've been working on that for a while.
Sounds good.
So obviously, right, it's a whole lot more devices, a whole lot more stuff. How in terms of support, right, one digital learning person for feeder pattern, how, I mean, how are we doing in, in terms of that aspect of it?
From a, in instructional support and a, you know, uh, technology integration model, five people for fifteen hundred teachers is, is overwhelming. Um, so that's something that Dr. Turner and I have been working closely on and looking at our support models and, and providing the right mentoring and coaching for our teachers. Um, because it is, for that team to take that task on is, is truly overwhelming. So, uh, it's not an easy task and it, and if they were, you know, those five people were just at one school, it would still be a lot. But the fact that they have a whole feeder pattern is definitely overwhelming. They're doing great things, but it's hard to feel like you're accomplishing a lot when there's so many people to get to over, you know, a short time, a, a short period of time. So that's something that we're, we're working closely on as we go forward.
And I certainly wouldn't want to tell you what to do, but at Whitewater and every department, I had one teacher that was a tech specialist in each department who worked with Mr. Jackson. And he used to meet with them once a month about delivery and all that. And they would go back and deliver to the teachers.
And, and that's, that's a, a great way to do it as well. We, we were just speaking this morning at our cabinet meeting about, uh, technology teams at the, at the school levels and had a really good discussion about that. So that, that's a perfect example of what we were talking about this morning for sure.
And do all the teachers have laptops now that interact?
Yes. Yes.
Well, you've had a busy year. Thank, thank you. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, Jim, uh, what's our Black, you might have mentioned this, but I missed it. Um, what's our Blackboard utilization right now? Are all the schools online? Are all the schools using it? All the teachers using it?
Unfortunately, I don't have like a percentage usage, uh, information right now. We have some reporting capabilities now that we've finally gotten from Blackboard. So we can, I can get that information for you. I can tell you at the, especially the K-three level, it's very low because our, our teachers are using Google Classroom and they have some solutions for that that are, uh, a little bit easier, a little more quick access for them. Um, at the high school and middle school levels, I think our adoptions have been going up. Again, is, it's probably not as high as we would have hoped it would be by now. But I think, as I mentioned, some of the issues this year really, um, hurt us with that.
Because we, we bought that system and spent a gob of money with the intention that that would be a universal, you know, point for families to...
And, and I can tell you, we're, we're meeting with, um, my department and a, and a few other folks are, we're actually starting those conversations with Blackboard in a couple of weeks about, um, our needs and their support of those needs.
And I've used several of those in the past and, uh, they weren't my favorite one to work with. But, so, uh, good luck.
I did have one more question. A couple of years ago, when we first started into Blackboard, I know that the colleges, universities were using that. Are they still using Blackboard?
It, it's still, um, widely adopted in the, in the, the higher ed space. And, um, I, I don't know what their numbers are in the K-12 space. I know, um, uh, you know, about five, six years ago, they made a big push into the K-12 arena and they had a large percentage of that business. I, I, I can't say what it is now. I, I do know that there's a few other big players in the LMS market that are, you know, doing very well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Move on to Superintendent's Report.
Yes.
Okay, we, um, first thing, we have facilities update. Mr. Satterfield and Mr. Sanders are going to share with you just a little bit. Come on up, Mike. And, uh, a couple of things that I'm, I, I know the board is interested in. I know that, um, uh, Mr. Satterfield, Mr. Sanders, and our building principals have been meeting on some of the design features with Booth and with Oak Grove. So we, Mike, I won't steal your thunder, but catch us up on facilities.
Yeah. Um, yes, sir, with regard to those two, uh, BRPH is already working on the design. They've met numerous times with the administrative staff at Oak Grove. And, uh, we've got a pretty good plan, we think, there. Um, it looks like that we should have that ready to bid sometime like in July. Um, and so we'd be able to bring those numbers to the board for their decision on that. Uh, basically, a, a quick overview of that project is that, um, we, we've decided to add a new PE facility, virtually identical to what we built for Peachtree City Elementary a few years ago. And then, um, we're, we're flipping, uh, the front and rear of the building so that, uh, what would have been the rear is now going to become the front. And we're going to build a, a, a new little administrative area there with a, a new facade that really identifies where the front of the school will be. Um, part of the reason for that is we, several years ago, at the request of Peachtree City, we did fl- flip our buses and car riders because we were, we had such a small queue line, we were backing out on to, uh, Crosstown Road, and they asked us to flip it. And we did that, and that's helped them out a lot. Um, so, um, we'll, we'll end up having the, the front of the school actually on, on the other road. But, um, the, the plan is to, um, put the additions on during this school year and then come back during the summer of twenty twenty and do the interior renovations, uh, obviously when the students aren't there. Uh, that, that's the plan on Oak Grove. Um, Manley Spangler is already working, uh, on drawings for the new booth. Um, or we're, we're calling it the Stage Coach Project, just so that we can keep the old booth and the new booth separate. But, uh, we, we've had meetings with Steve Green and, uh, Dr. Broadhead. We thought it'd be a good idea to go to, uh, Bennett's Mill and ask them, what's worked for you, what hadn't. And, and so, uh, we, we got input from, from their administration. And then also been getting input from, uh, the folks at Booth. Um, it looks like that project will probably be ready to bid, um, I would say probably in August. So we could bring it to the board, uh, most likely late August or September, uh, there. The, uh, the other ongoing projects, McIntosh is still moving along well. We expect them to finish up in sometime by late May, that they should be completed. They're, uh, busy doing a lot of exterior work, pouring sidewalks and landscaping and things of that nature. Uh, inside, they've already laid most of the floor covering, the painting they're putting in, um, casework. I was there just a little while ago, and they were, uh, bringing in all the teacher wardrobe cabinets, things of that nature. Uh, so that, that's moving along, uh, real well. Um, the, the other projects from last summer that we've already gotten COs and they're just finishing up punch lists and closeout documents, we expect all those to be, uh, within the month, to be completely closed out. Uh, we've, uh... We've been working pretty hard the last two or three weeks on the security vestibule, security and safety projects. And that, that's scattered throughout the school system. There's about 10, 10 of those. And so, you know, that's, that's moving along pretty good. And then before, the week before spring break, we got in and cleaned out the auto shop at Sandy Creek, got that all out and the contractor's going to be starting this week on his demolition for that new film, film lab. So it's busy time, you know, winding a lot of stuff down from last year and getting geared up for this, this summer. I, I will point out, and, and we discussed this earlier today, that on the, the new middle school project with them, you know, looking at, at about a September in terms of having a, a final price for that entire project. If you start, cut somebody loose in September, well, you, you're just going to take about three months to clear the trees and do the grading, so you're not even starting a footing almost till Christmas. And it, it would be my recommendation that we split that and have a phase one site contract and then phase two be for the building so that we could go ahead and get some prices and get started in June. And so basically, June, July and August would be clearing trees and grading. And then at that time, it'd be time to award the contract for the building and the contractor on day one could start digging footings and pouring concrete. If, if we don't approach it like that, I, I believe we're going to pretty much lose December, January and February, we'd just be sitting there spinning our wheels in the mud. So if, if the board would like to go in that direction, we can make adjustments to our schedule to do that. But I think that would be the wise move to try to go ahead and at least get the trees, you know, down and grubbing the stomps out and, and some of the grading done during the good summer weather rather than wait until the winter time. But that, that's pretty much what I've got.
Questions?
This is nitpicking, but on number two, renovating stadium field houses, is that East Plus Three or East Plus Two?
The renovating the field houses, that's, that's in with the Fayette County High project.
Okay. So did that fall under where it said other upgrades?
It's coming out of, out of three.
Okay, because it didn't say that on East Plus Three, but it did say other upgrades. Is that what that is, is meant by that?
That was just in the entire project and we did the same thing for Star's Mill. We, we've just finished up their football locker rooms and then we did, did the same thing for Fayette High, just not quite through, but we're almost through with, with those. But we do still have the bottom floor of Fayette High to do this summer. We did the, the top second floor classrooms, we've rotated through those during the school year, working with the principal and the staff there, they allowed us, they gave us about six rooms at a time and we'd do six rooms and rotate. So we did take care of the top floor and now we're gearing up for the bottom floor, which is, is the most extensive because you've got all your science labs, your CTAE, you know, all those areas to do. So that'll be a good bit of work this summer. And then, of course, last summer, we did the admin, all the fine arts, the gym and cafeteria, kitchen, those areas we did last summer. So, all right.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very quickly, our attendance and enrollment, I know you've had a chance to take a peek at that, but we're at 20,334 students, that's 188 students above where we were last year this time, so right, almost 200 students more. Any questions with that? If, if not, I'll bounce on down to item C. Mr. Swett and Dr. Turner have been meeting with our calendar committee. Just to give you a quick update, they've already met two times. I think they have another meeting coming up on April 17th. It's a pretty large committee, there are over 25 people that are involved in that and that includes students and parents, teachers, administrators, both building and district office. And Mr. Swett describes those meetings as very positive and we appreciate that, so far, so good. We hope to be able to have some drafts to bring back to you and to the board, possibly late April, if not certainly early in May.
And I assume we'll still have professional development days in the calendar?
Yes, we've been talking about that and maybe how to incorporate that, using some of Mr. Farmer's technology, maybe even having some e-learning time built into the calendar that, which would provide us some professional learning time. I know a number of districts in the metro area are already doing that, so.
It did seem like the full days worked better than the half days.
Yes. Any other comments, questions about the calendar? If not, we'll move on down to the FY20 budget development update and Mr. Gray's going to come and share. We actually had some good news come to us during the week of spring break. Of course, you know, signing die was done and we did hear that we're going to have that $3,000 raise for our certified staff and we have the 2% for classified. We don't have all that information yet, we're still looking for clarification on how that's going to roll out. Tom's going to share a little bit with you. Not having that full week last week to work on it, it's going to be kind of at a high level, but we hope together more this week.
Yeah, there's not a lot of new information to share, but you'll notice on the worksheet for your revenue side, it did gray out the area for the QBE earnings. I've adjusted it with the estimated amount based on them having a full $3,000 in the salary schedule for teachers compared to the previous amount of the 2775. So that is an increase a little bit over the last time. And so over last year, we're expecting about $6.6 million more in QBE funding. Local revenues, we're still pending on digest valuation. It's a, it's a little too early. We hope to have some final numbers pretty soon to start working with, then we can start making some decisions on the other things. And even on the expenditure side, which is on page two, the only thing that's really changed there is we did increase the amount of salary for the certified, increase in the state salary schedule to $3,000. And that is going to be roughly $6 million to do that across the board for all the certified staff. And then in the middle, you'll notice we still have the allotment increases, but above that, we still have about $4 million worth of requests from the schools and departments to go through before, once we have a decent revenue number that we can start making some decisions on how those fall in. Okay, then if there's any questions on that? No? Okay. Thank you.
I've got a couple of comments as we're developing the budget. And just things we've implied or told our taxpayers is that, you know, we've increased taxes because of austerity, that's gone. We've increased our taxes when the property assessments went up and we said we needed that. When we passed East Plus, we said that would probably offset some of the property taxes. And so as you're planning your budget, I want you to plan for a little bit of, and I'm thinking in the 17s, I don't know, but I mean, just, I just want you to plan for not doing the full 19 and a half, and this is just me talking, but not plan for the full millage that we're collecting right now. So I think, you know, the product of our enterprise here is educated students, but the customers, the taxpayers, there's one paying the bill. So I think, I think we need to take care of the paying customer for once in a while. And so I think this might be the year to do that. So I just want to throw that out there.
No, I think it's a, it's a valid point to make that we need to make sure that we're doing the appropriate amount of education, appropriate amount of expenditures and then base our millage based on what that is.
Because since our crisis, we've been able to accumulate $30 million that we haven't spent yet and we're looking at 26 million we haven't spent next year, so either need to...
Oh, Dr. Marchman, we could spend it, but we're holding on to those reins tight. So we, we have great appreciation for what you're talking about. We have, you know, this, the spring break came at an interesting time for us as the budget was finalized by the legislature. So we kind of have a, some, a pretty good idea and we've gotten some more information from our local tax assessment office and we want to be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollar, too. I know, no one's going to argue about that. We certainly want to be able to, to also perform at the level you would have us perform with regard to our programs and services. So there's still a lot of work to be done, but I think we're all very sensitive to that need to be careful, be good stewards. We're pleased that we'll do that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if we're all going to put in our personal opinion, I mean, we're looking at a, a sheet here that shows roughly $11 million more to provide roughly the same services that we provided last year. So to talk about sort of drastic cut in revenue, I think is, you know, a little bit, a little bit odd.
I don't think we're talking drastic cut in revenue, but I'm saying we've had replacement revenue from other sources and we don't need that.
Maybe, I mean, all of those things you said that you, you said to justify our tax rate, I don't think I've ever said any of those things. I think that the people in Fayette County, like me, who moved here because of this school system, came here and expect the best product that we can give and the best school system that we have and understand as educated people that good school systems, you know, that there are taxes associated with that. If there was evidence that our tax rate was somehow impeding development or causing people to, you know, not buy houses here, then I would think that that might be more of an issue. But I think, given what I see in the real estate market and the people who want to come here, I think people are more interested in us providing interesting and exciting experiences for students.
We'll bring you a good budget, I'll, I'll promise you that. Let us continue to work on it.
Thank you.
Moving on to item E, and this is a, a East Plus expenditure is our proposal for our bus purchase. I know Mr. Sanders may want to add just a little bit here, but what we're looking at doing is purchasing or recommend the purchase of 10 72 passenger buses and five, what we typically refer to as special ed buses. That's a total of 15 buses for just under 1.4 million. We're looking at surplusing 20 of our buses. Some of those may get to turn into STEAM and STEM buses, but there won't be 20 of them. But we will want to bring that back to you if we can go ahead and move forward with that. We should be able to get those buses in, maybe sometime August, September, that's our hope. But we've put off and had some re-looking at our bus purchase plan and, and worked real well with Ms. Owen and George at the Transportation Department and we feel, feel this is going to meet our needs. Be happy to answer any questions for you, Mike. Anything you want to add to that or you're good?
We'll add, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, this, these funds come out of East Plus Two?
That's correct. This is already allocated in East Plus Two and we're planning to spread the remaining funds for bus purchases out over three years and decreasing the amount of buses purchased over that same time period.
When we surplus a bus...
I said two, I'm sorry, did I say three? I meant East Plus Two, East Plus Two, excuse me.
You did. When we surplus a bus, what's the ballpark? Couple thousand dollars, $10,000?
I'm sorry, the cost?
No, when we sell the buses.
We get a little bit more than that. I'm afraid to quote a number right off the top of my head.
I think George was saying about $8,000 to $10,000 at one point.
It's dependent upon the mileage and the shape and that kind of stuff there. I know we've sold some for as low as $4,000 since I've been here, but they were older and maybe not in as good a shape, but it depends upon the mileage.
The mileage.
I have a question. Do we get any federal money for the special ed buses?
No.
Okay, when I was a principal, every time I asked to use a small special ed bus to take a small athletic team someplace, I was always told, no, because federal money pays for part of those buses.
Not transportation.
Not.
So that means they can be used for after-school athletic events?
To my knowledge.
We actually have some smaller buses and I don't know, we didn't, we didn't have those, I think, when you were a high school principal, but activity buses. There are 14 plus one.
That don't require the full CDL, but the, one, one issue with the special ed bus, they don't have as many seats because they have the chairlifts and those kinds of things.
That's why I asked for a smaller bus because I had a team of 10 tennis players and I was told I can't use a special ed bus because there's federal money involved.
I'll have to ask Mr. Ray Bold, I've, I've never, I've never heard that. That, that's a new one on me. But that is why we bought the, the activity buses. They don't require the full CDL. They still have to go through a few, few of the steps, but they'll hold up to 14 students, 14 plus one, plus the driver. And I've actually driven those, they, they drive just like a van. And so those have been, those have been popular for those, not, not just the sport, the athletics, but some of the smaller extracurricular activities as well. But I'll, I'll ask...
Like the debate team up to Atlanta or something?
Right, yes, sir. And, but Mr. Rebel, I'll ask on the other, that's, that's new to me.
Okay, maybe I was just told that.
Move on to item F, if there's no other questions there. I know that we've sent out information about the Fayette County Development Authority, looking at some training sessions. We've gotten several of the board members that have responded. We've gotten some tentative dates. Nothing is finalized just yet. I know that the goal is to have representatives from the, the commissions, from all of the municipalities, the councilmen and women and county commissioners and so they're, they're working on that. But if you haven't responded, of those, I think, three dates that we sent out are three pockets of dates, please do let Kay know and we'll let the, the Development Authority people know. We'll try to get the biggest group that we can there to participate in this training. Item 4G, I know, and I think that's good to let our community know this, but our Board of Education conducted a self-assessment based on the Georgia School Boards Association, a self-assessment. And based on that assessment, we then met with community members and reviewed that assessment. And I know we had one of our district office people there, Mr. Swett, attended the meeting and I understand we had several parents and business leaders in the community that participated. Mr. Hollowell, any comments you want to make there? The report I got from Mr. Swett was that it was a good meeting.
Yeah, we, we spent a lot of time on kind of a 30,000-foot view. I would say kind of one of the, the common themes was they were challenging us not to do incremental improvements in the school system, but to go for big changes and big innovations. And some of the ideas we talked about our, our retreat, they had kind of brought up unprompted. So that was kind of interesting. Mr. Ray Bold was there as well.
I agree, a lot of good ideas from the parents and the community members and same thing. A lot of their ideas that they were looking for are ideas that we discussed at the retreat and it kind of fell right in line.
Good. So, but yeah, it was a good, it's a good exercise.
Good deal. Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll, I'll move down to the last item under superintendent's report and deals with the Board of Education Code of Ethics. And we actually did this back in the fall, but we have a new board member, Mr. Ray Bold, coming on board. And what we wanted to be able to do is to officially address this in a board meeting and, and I think everybody is aware of the Code of Ethics. We actually have all of our board members sign off on saying that it was reviewed in a board meeting and addressed and approved. And we have the report that has Ms. Basham's signature on it, but we wanted to give Mr. Ray Bold an opportunity to do that as well. So if y'all are okay and approve the Code of Ethics, again, we'll have you sign and let Mr. Ray Bold have an opportunity to sign with us.
Sure.
The fact that I had to sign it when I ran doesn't count?
This is for the report that we have to have, more or less because of the...
I mean, I don't mind signing, but I just...
Yeah, it's the same code. Yeah, it's the same Code of Ethics, yes, sir, it is. It's just signing as a a member of the board now.
Okay.
Okay?
This is a policy that we came up with ourselves.
Yes.
And I guess my question, is there anything in the Code of Ethics that we need to change or add or delete? And the only thing that's weird to me is the the thing at the bottom, we're tapped to two-thirds, but we don't have a two-thirds. We've got a three-fifths or a four-fifths. And but then, even then, if there's a. Even then, if there's some kind of sanction that doesn't have any teeth, I'm not really even sure why that is. I I I don't know if that's even important. But you'd have to have four board members all agree that you've misbehaved.
All of our board members behave well, so we're in good shape. No worries about that.
But it's been nine years since it's been revised. So it's probably a good timeframe to at least look at it and think about it. If anybody wants to, I mean, I don't have anything, but you might.
If there are no other comments on that, if we're okay with that, then I can move to the only action item we have. We discussed this at our last board meeting, is the five-year facility plan resolutions. We've got fi- I think five of those that we need to ask the board to approve officially so we can get it in before their April 15 deadline. We'd recommend the board approve the resolutions.
Can we, is there any discussion?
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second, any discussion?
There you go.
So we go. Do we need to approve them one at a time, or approve them all?
I think you can, I think unless there's a problem with any of them, you can, I think you can approve them as bulk.
All right, the motion is to approve all five resolutions. If there's no further discussion, call for a vote. All in favor? Five oh.
Okay, we have information items. I did want to share with you, and this was something we've done for the last couple of years, is the Alcohol Awareness Month proclamation. You've got the proclamation. Mr. Mumford will be here at our April board meeting to to address the board and and just to share with you the work that we're trying to collaborate and cooperate with, the drug-free, Fayette County Drug Free Coalition. And certainly, we support that. We we don't want our young people involved in alcohol and in any of those cases. So we think it's important that we do this on an annual basis, and this month is when we typically do that. So we'll bring that back to you so the board can vote on that. But you can see the resolution as information. Last but not least, I I know everybody saw that we completed signing day. And a lot of things took place in the legislative session. A number of those items, we'll be talking about more as we get some clarification with regard to, first, what what the governor signs. And second, the interpretation through the DOE after they figure out what the legislation needs. So there are several things, and it will probably impact some of our board policy that we may need to tweak. So we're always open to do that. But that's all the information I have, Mr. Hollowell. I do have a need for executive session for personnel, one issue of property, and also need to have one comment about a school safety plan that I need to address with you. So those three areas.
All right, we need to move to executive session to discuss personnel, property and a school safety plan. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Second. All in favor? Five oh. All right, we're returned from executive session. Or do I have a motion to return from executive session? So moved?
Yeah.
Second. All in favor? Four oh. Any recommendations from executive session?
No, sir, no recommendations.
No, sir, no recommendations at this time.
Okay, without objection, we're adjourned.